All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order, invite everybody to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Billy, roll the roll, please. Jim Donda.
Here.
Jim Shiloh.
Here.
Christian Koppel.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Beth Mary Evans.
Here.
Alex Rados.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
The board is present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Shiloh.
Yes.
Koppel.
Yes.
DeVito.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Rados.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Donda.
Yes.
Motion here.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who'd like to address the board on any particular issue who's not already on the agenda? Okay, so no one, we'll move on. Communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters. Got to see what the federal authorities are up to these days, thanks to the IASB's report, FOIA requests, I see there was one, but it was like three, but they were kind of all related. And that's been responded to. Committee reports. Very much needed.
Just have a question for the town hall meetings, you know, would we like the setting of dates for those?
The town hall meetings, those, so what we do is we took the corresponding board admin retreats. Two of those will continue to be board admin retreats, I think it's the first meeting in each semester. The other date was the town hall meetings. So, to make sure that we send those dates to you. It's on the, it's on the list of all the meeting dates, I feel like you've sent that to the board. And it's in board docs, so, at the very bottom, so it doesn't stand out, it's at the very bottom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it the meeting schedule?
Is it? Is that in the calendar? There's more dates below.
Okay.
So the dates are October 3rd and April 16th.
October 3rd and April 16th.
Yeah. And those are still at 5:30, board admin retreats were at 5:30, so we've got that time. But yeah, those are the dates.
Thanks. So April 15th?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen.
You'd like to file it off.
Yeah.
Any other committee reports? Okay, move on into superintendent's report.
Well, tonight I've invited Gary Zabulka to speak with us at the, you know, called the last meeting. We talked about the possibility of doing some strategic planning. Mr. Zabulka, well, Dr. Zabulka, I'll let him introduce himself, tell you a little bit about himself here in just a second, but he's a gentleman that I've been speaking with about the possibility of working with us and gave you guys the full chart. We had a good conversation about that last time, but, and I attempted to answer some questions that Dr. Zabulka will do a much better job answering. So, this firm is Education, Educational Leadership Solutions.
Correct.
So, without further ado, Dr. Gary Zabulka.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Wilder, appreciate it. Thanks everyone for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I've got to say, I selfishly asked Mr. Wilder, I said, would it be part of your regular board meetings, or any chance could be near the beginning of the meeting? And he said, yes, we'll do the best that we can with that. So then when I saw the agenda, and I saw that it was down, you know, five notches or so, I was thinking, well, maybe about a half an hour or so, I admit, it's, boy, we're an efficient board for you. So, so I should even mention, my name is Gary Zabulka. I am a retired superintendent, I am a lifelong educator of over forty years. I was a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, and superintendent for thirteen years, and then continued to consult beyond my actual work years in a school district. I actually am one of the facilitators for the School of Advanced Leadership for Superintendents here in the state of Illinois. Actually, Mr. Wilder is one of our most recent graduates, being part of the last cohort. Kathy Countryman was also a graduate of that program, and actually Kathy is now one of our coaches. I was just in Springfield this past weekend as we held another session, and it's been nice to have Kathy actually serve as a coach to help lead and support new superintendents, not new superintendents, but superintendents who are interested in growing and becoming better superintendents. So, I feel like I've got a little bit of connection to your district already. I was also mentioning to Jim, your principal, that it's been a while since I've made this drive. I live in Central Lake County, but I commuted to Northern many times. I'm getting my master's degree there in school administration many, many moons ago. I'll go back to say, probably in the early eighties is when I was making that drive on a regular basis, and even went to summer school where I was literally driving every day. And I mentioned, you know, I asked how old the school building was, only because I don't remember seeing the building when I went there, and it, according to Jim, was still, was here in the early eighties, but he said it may have been behind some tall grasses at that particular time. Anyway, some of the other buildings, I went into town and I saw, I asked Mr. Wilder what was going on there with all the commotion with all the people there in town, and that's one of your school events, and, you know, what a nice testament to your district to be so connected to your community, which is a very important aspect, you know, of the work that we do in our school districts, and that is to engage our community in the best ways that we can. Nevertheless, you know, so my introduction of myself was just there as a part of that. Our company is Ed Leadership Solutions. I formed this company with two colleagues, I probably go to the next, maybe even two slides already. These are my partners, those of us who are pictured, so, we're a firm, we've been together for, as a firm, for just over three years. We actually started during the COVID years, if you will. Both Rich Volz, who's the top picture there, also worked for ISA, Superintendent's Association, as a professional development director, and Don White also served as a superintendent, and we've got a whole list of other associates, some names you may or may not recognize. We're actually kind of pleased to say that three of our associates have been recruited away from us to work for the State Board of Education. I'm pleased to say that, only because we know that the State Board of Education could use some quality people, and we believe that Steve Assoyev, Kamako Patterson, and Matt Seaton are going to be quality people for the State Board, but I think that's some exciting things that we have to look forward to. With that, I'd like to share with you our overall approach, if you will, to strategic planning, and your district has a strategic plan in place already, and I'll get back to that in just a moment, but one of the things that we find as the most valuable pieces of strategic planning is aligning all the different dynamics and groups of a district and of a community to be going in the same direction and trying to achieve the same ends, if you will. As you know, as board members, a big part of the work that you do is to set the mission, the vision, and the values and beliefs that are in place in your district, as well as to help develop the district goals. From there, they go to become the superintendent goals, but then from the superintendent goals, those same goals should emanate and go out toward the building principals and the buildings themselves, even to the teachers and even to the students. And actually, we've even since updated this slide, we even say to the parents, everyone should be familiar with what's happening in our school district from a goal standpoint, so that we all know that we're at least going in that same direction and what we're trying to achieve, so that we see that everybody's responsible when you have a well-articulated strategic plan in place. So Steve attempted to share this with you and to talk through these pieces, again, looking at it this way, it does look very busy, so basically, the next few minutes of this presentation, and I promise you it won't be much longer than five to ten minutes, is to kind of walk you through these different steps as to what our approach typically is with districts that we work with, in order to either create a strategic plan or to update their strategic plan, depending upon what the situation is in the district. So, we're for believers that this is not just district work, that this goes beyond the district, and we recommend, we call it a core stakeholder team, that involves all segments representing your community. So you've got board members, we love it when all seven want to participate, but if for some reasons only a handful of you are able to, you know, that is what it is. Administrators, these are just general numbers. Your district's a little bit larger than some of the ones that we've worked with recently, so I can even see increasing some of these numbers for these other categories. So, point being that we recommend a solid number of administrators. Representative number of staff members, you've got seven schools, I believe, and all seven schools should have some representation as a part of this process. Parents from all the schools should be represented. Students, from, I won't say necessarily all the schools, typically, we recommend some middle school students and some high school students. We typically don't recommend seniors, and we typically, we typically don't recommend eighth graders, but I will say we don't work with too many unit schools. So, you know, seven, eighth grade would suffice as well, and trying to get that student voice be a part of your process. We have found that when we work with large groups such as this, when you have the students present and available, it keeps everybody in check, and plus the things that students say as far as what they value, what they see as important, is interesting to hear from all the adults in the building, I'm sorry, as part of the process. So, we, we're firm believers that we need to include students, and then finally, community members, and that could be members at large, members of your Chamber of Commerce, members of your police, fire, library, any other municipal groups that you'd like to have represented on there. Point being, a nice cross-section of people overall that we should include in this process. All of these people, that's why we call it a stakeholder team, have a stake in the district, in your community, and therefore, we like to have a nice overarching group. That total there says anywhere from thirty-five to fifty, again, for a district year size, I might even push that out to about sixteen, but I think once you get to numbers much larger than that, then it gets a little bit more challenging to work with and truly come to consensus, if you will, with groups that are much larger than that. Typically, at the beginning of the process, we like to get input from the community, as to how is your school currently doing, how is your school, district currently being viewed? We have surveys available where we can ask questions regarding all aspects of your district, and get feedback from staff members, parents, and/or community members, if you will, to give insight into how they view your school district at this particular time. We also could do that in a couple of other ways, in addition to sending out a survey, we could actually come here and host what we call focus groups, and it could be something similar to a room like this, where we'd invite people to come in, we would ask pointed questions, get input from them, point being that we want to get people's thoughts, ideas about the districts, to kind of collect some data around certain topics in particular, which I'll be addressing in just a moment, but, again, it's important to see how is your community viewing your district at this particular time, as well as your staff. So, your district, you know, we've worked with districts that have had their mission, vision, and core values in place. We've also worked with districts that haven't had any of that in place. We've had districts that have had it in place and said, you know, we think this is going to be fine, but let's talk to the stakeholders at large, if your mission statement is truly your district's mission, in other words, is that why you exist as an organization today? And does that still, excuse me, hold water today, and is that embraced by your community today? Same thing with the vision, we'd ask that same question. Now, I can tell you, as someone who does this work of strategic planning, I think that both your mission statement and your vision statements are quality statements, as far as do they pass the test, as far as qualifying for a quality mission statement and a quality vision statement? Absolutely. The biggest test is, do people embrace this? Do people recognize these? If I were to ask your staff members, any of your students, and/or even some of your parents, do you have any idea what the mission, Sycamore District 427 is? Would they respond in such a way? Yours is such a mission that can be memorized. Actually, when we work with districts, we encourage districts to adopt a mission statement that can be memorized, okay, so that people know, in fact, why, what the mission is, okay, and why it is what it is. You're coming up to the start of the school year. As a former superintendent, I used to quiz my staff on that first day of school, as weird as that sounds. I used to give them a piece of paper, ours was a little bit longer than that, so it wasn't, it was memorable, memorizable, if that's, if I could turn that into a verb, and, but I would leave key words out of it to see if they, in fact, address it, because technically, if you don't know what the mission is, the organization for which you work for, maybe you should think twice about why you work. So, anyway, so that's the mission part, the vision part, again, you know what that is, is that mission still suffice today? Okay? Is that still what the goal of this district is? Basically, the vision is, what do you want to become as Sycamore School District? Do you want to become that place that has that learning experience where students and staff are engaged and want to come back the next day? Is that what you feel most strongly about as far as your vision for this district? And if it is, then that may still be a viable vision for your district. Okay? So those are a couple of the components that we typically address, not just with the board, we do that with the entire core stakeholder group. We also talk about the importance of what the mission and the vision actually are supposed to stand for, and make sure, you know, that too passed the muster test. We'll do it on the next slide. Then you've got your core values, okay? And your core values, again, I was able to get out here a little bit earlier today, traffic was even better than I thought that it was, and as I got into the building and started looking around, and granted, this is only one of seven schools that you have, I noticed that you've got core values kind of posted all over the place, including even in the parking lot, you've got banners that list those. Are those still considered to be your district's core values? Is that what you're promoting first and foremost as a part of your district? You can actually go to the next slide, Steve, because you've got ten of them, which typically, as a part of the process, if we were starting this process and we had nothing in place, we typically recommend five to seven, okay? Now, is there any magic to the number? Not necessarily. The magic is, you know, how well are they articulated, and how much are they embraced? Is the question one's got to ask. You know, again, if you were to ask somebody, what are the core values of this district, would they know what these are, you know, without having to think too hard? Okay? So, this is, you know, that work is the initial work that we would do with the entire core stakeholder team, keeping in mind that we would have administered that survey, we would have that data, we wouldn't even talk about that data just yet that we collected through the survey and/or through focus groups, but we'd be then, you know, coming back to look at, so are we looking to recreate the mission, vision, and core values, or are they good as they are? Okay? Are they acceptable to the group as they once were? Now, I'm going to go ahead and quote, if I may, there's, you may remember this name, you may not, a guy by the name of Herb Kelleher, was actually the owner and CEO of Southwest Airlines, back when Southwest Airlines first started, and people once asked him the question about missions, and asked if, you know, how often should you change your mission? And so, actually, if you've got a good mission and your company still stands by it, in this case, your district still stands by it, you shouldn't have to change it at all, as long as it's, you know, again, dearly embraced by all the parties that are affected by it. And Kelleher then goes on and said, you know, we shouldn't be adjusting that either, just like we shouldn't be adjusting, you know, deuteronomy or ecclesiastes either, because they're longstanding and they still apply today. So, point to that. Going back to what we talked about, the survey piece, we also, in addition to the survey, ask your current school leaders to report on how the district is performing academically, financially, in the facilities area, technology-wise, and communications. Those are the five areas that we typically suggest or recommend to focus on as a start. However, if you, as a district, see anything glaringly missing that needs to be focused on for your district, we go ahead and, you know, look at and/or consider other areas. I'm going to show you a sample of a district that we worked with and created their plan recently, and you'll see how this can vary a little bit, but for the most part, in school business, if you will, in our profession, these are the five top areas that typically get addressed. We find out how we're doing in all of those areas, we then combine the survey data that we've collected from your stakeholders regarding these areas as well, these who have all been addressed as a part of that survey. Okay? Then we go through a SWOT analysis with the strengths, the weaknesses, any opportunities and/or threats, with all of these things that we have then looked at and discussed. We look at all the data and look at, how can we utilize that data as strengths? What are we doing exceptionally well? What are those things that we may not be doing as well as we could be, that we may need to bolster or shore up and/or make stronger in our district? And then looking for opportunities to help move the district forward. The whole purpose of a strategic plan is to continue to move the district forward in positive ways. Okay? So then we look at developing goals for each of those major areas identified, okay? For the most part, as a part of this process, we look at what I'd call big picture overarching goals, okay? You're not looking at the very specific goals yet, because that typically would not be the work of this core stakeholder group. Keep in mind, this core stakeholder group will have fifty to sixty people as a part of it, and as that group will look at the big overarching goals that we'd like to see the Sycamore District adopt and address to move forward. What is a part of our process beyond this, and I mentioned it at this time because I think it'll fit best, is that you've hired quality educators to lead your district. Once they see those big picture goals, it will be up to them, with or without our support, to work with them, to identify specifically, how are those areas going to be addressed specifically in the next three to five years? Okay? So, the purpose of the large group is to kind of focus the direction, if you will, big picture-wise, as to the direction the district should be going. Then, once those goals are identified, then the specific goals will come beyond that, primarily with and through your administrative team. Okay? Upon doing this, you know, we look at to see if there's the alignment that we are looking for with the district's mission, vision, core values, and the goals, make sure that alignment and that coherence is there, does it all make sense, does it represent what you, as District 427, wants to then promote and stand by as far as the direction that the district is going to move forward. As I said earlier, this is, this is the part that the board typically then has to approve, I believe that's the next slide as well, no, this is, this is a sample. So, the final product is what this could look like. Now, again, the way our firm actually works with strategic planning, we can offer a product that looks very similar to this, and I actually used this one, this is one that we've done in the last year, McHenry District, you probably have some idea as to where it is, but McHenry District did not have a mission, a vision, they didn't have core values, they didn't have any goals. So we basically utilize the process that we just described to you in working with them, core group of about fifty people for that district, they're not quite as large as you are, and these are the things that they came up with. I'm going to share, if I can, a little bit more specifically, I realize that you can't see this, and, Mr. Wilder, do they have access to this, or could they have access to this on their own if they wanted to look at it more closely?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's part of their packet, I assume? But for example, the first five that you see there is curriculum, instruction, and assessment, okay? That's usually a big component of strategic planning. The actual goal that was developed was to maximize individual student growth and achievement for all learned, okay? That may sound very general, and again, the point of this is, that is one of their big five focus areas. Achievement is important, but then that goes from this group, okay, that's our core stakeholder group, to the administration and saying, okay, let's put this into action, develop action plans for how are we going to truly maximize that individual student growth and achievement? What is that going to look like for our district for the next two years? And like I said, either with or without, have that opportunity to then dig down deeper as to what that's going to look like. The other goals that they came up with, their other goal areas, they've got safety and wellbeing, finance, and facilities, they had combined. They're very big in innovation and technology, so they combined those, and then community and staff engagement, those are the five different areas that you find there. Again, the goals are broad, but that's with intent of being that way, so that then the administration has the opportunity to dig down deeper, and then upon doing so, yes, we'll still share those with the board for approval, but at the same time, that's only for this group, that does not involve that whole core stakeholder group in doing so. Okay? You also see there their vision, their core values, although you can't see the core values very closely, but they had about eight or nine different core values as well, they just combined them into different sentences, they've got six different sentences there that kind of describe the values of their district. So that is ultimately what the, what the final product can look like. So then, once it's there, then it does go to the board then for that final approval, because, again, this is considered governance, the board sets the tone and the direction for the district by approving the mission, the vision, the core values, and the goals. So with that, we'll continue to work with the core stakeholder group and all of you until we have a product that you are completely satisfied with, okay? And we're just committed to you being happy with what has been developed as a part of our partnership and working together. These are some of the districts that we've worked with for strategic planning, we also do administrator searches, which you're not interested in, and/or data analysis, we have those different aspects that we do as a part of our consulting firm as well. I've been talking for about the last fifteen or twenty minutes, and I apologize, I should have said at the very beginning, if you have any questions along the way, stop me, but now... We also do administrator searches, which you're not interested in, and/or data analysis. We, we have those, um, different aspects that we do as a part of our consulting firm as well. I've been talking for about the last fifteen or twenty minutes, and I apologize, I should've said at the very beginning, if you have any questions along the way, stop me, but now since I end, I can open, open that door and, um, you know, open the floor up to any questions about our process and/or about strategic planning that I can, um, answer for you at this particular thing.
Gary, appreciate your, uh, presentation. You walked us right through it, I felt, step by step, I really, really appreciate it. Very, very easy to understand. Uh, my really question is, timeframe wise, what does this look like for most districts? How long does it normally take? Is it a, I mean, especially for a district that, okay, we've got something in place, we're not starting from scratch?
Sure. Yeah, great question. And, you know, we say we're not starting from scratch, and I think that would be, you know, we kind of are, but if everybody says we're good with those first parts, we can kind of move on much later.
We are jumping off the plane as well.
No, no, exactly.
Sure.
But now, to answer your question, we typically say, you know, that final product that you saw is typically the result of about fifteen to eighteen hours of work together as that core stakeholder team. Now, if you're, you're looking at that, or what does that look like? Well, that can look a couple of different ways. Oftentimes, if we meet on weeknights, like, you know, Tuesday nights when you're not having board meetings and/or, you know, weeknights, we typically try to build in three-hour sessions per weeknights, so roughly six PM to nine PM, five-thirty to eight-thirty, whatever works best for you and/or your community. We also encourage, if the district is open to it, to consider a periodic Saturday, okay? Because a Saturday, you can get more hours in and therefore, um, you know, less redundancy of trying to, you know, re-review and to get us to that next point. And we would spend, we don't spend typically all day on Saturday, but typically like at eight-thirty till two o'clock, eight-thirty to one-thirty or two o'clock, because in that timeframe, you could accomplish a lot more quickly, okay? So, we give a range of hours, um, it could be less than that, again, um, you know, on a personal level, not that it matters, I like your mission, but it doesn't matter if I like your mission and/or your vision, um, it matters the core stakeholder who has bought into that. If we found that it did, um, the price that we would charge would be a price that would not exceed that amount, and if we found that we needed less sessions and so on, we would reduce that price because we're not here to, um, take it more than for the work than, if that makes any sense, if I put it in most terms. Okay? Does that answer your question somewhat? Do you have any time for it? We also, uh, if I can just piggyback on, on that previous statement regarding, you know, the overall timeframe, is that we try to also limit, try to do it in three to five sessions, okay? If we can, you know, between the weeknights and/or a Saturday, three to five. If we have a Saturday, better chance there's less. If we don't, better chance we've got, you know, five, three-hour evening sessions would be fifteen hours.
So, is it typical that each of the sessions is broken down? We do the first two at one, the second two at, or are these all, nine steps all done simultaneously?
Good question. No, actually, we start with mission, vision and core values, okay? And again, if we went through those relatively quickly, and for whatever reasons, you know, if they didn't change, then we actually would move more quickly into your district's current reality part and then look at developing goals because those drive the district's goals, okay? If your district, um, you know, if your mission is what it is, and your vision, you know what your vision is, most of the conversation is, what are the things that we need to do here at Sycamore 427 to get us to that vision from where we are today, based on the information that we have through the survey and people's input as a part of, you know? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it, but it leads to another one.
Sure, please.
Do we, as a group, um, come up with the specific goals, or do you help us with that? That we, that we measure that are able to be, does it, do you understand what I'm?
Yeah, I think I, I'll take that there. We work with the entire group, Alex, to get those, what I call those overarching goals.
Yeah.
We saw those as the five biggies. We work with you closely. Granted, what, what happens is for the initial mission, vision and core values piece, we kinda work with a whole group, granted you're split up into different tables, and they are, um, what I call heterogeneous groupings, in other words, we don't put all the board members at one table, in fact, we spread, there's seven of you, we'll put you at seven different tables, we put teachers at seven different tables, we put administrators at seven different tables, so there's a good cross-section of people at each table, and then we talk about the mission, the vision and core values and try to, um, reach consensus on those. Once we've gotten there, for those other areas, the academics, the financials, the facilities and so on, we'll ask everybody to name what are their two priority groups they would like to work with. So, Eric may say, I wanna work with the technology group, Jim may say, I wanna be with the finance and facilities group, okay? You let us know, and then we, we split you, we, we regroup you into different groups when we get to those sessions, so that you can focus on those groups that you are most interested in contributing toward. Now, also though, even though we've got you all in different groups, let's say five different groups, we run whatever your group, Alex, let's say you're on the, um, communications.
Okay.
Okay, we'll put you on communications. You're on the communication group. What you present will be presented to the entire group as well, because everyone should hear what everybody else is saying, because it creates a montage, if you will, of these five major goal areas and that's number of groups that you're involved with, okay? Does that answer your question?
Kind of, but I'm still not quite following. When's the point where we, let's say, we as a district want to, I don't know, invest in a new communications service or send out a weekly update to all stakeholders, that might be, that's stuff we typically do, but if that's a new idea, is that something that's included, or is, or do we just do the overarching goal and then you guys hand it back up to the administration and come up with this specific?
Great question, I appreciate that, because we're drilling down a little bit further, but this is good. So what happens, yes, your group is primarily, um, responsible for coming up with that overarching goal, but you will come up with some of these other pieces of it, and it's those other pieces that we also accept, not to finalize and put the final wording to, but that's what we then give to the administration overall and say, communications group came up with these half a dozen points as a part of this overarching goal. These should be things that the administration should be focused on in creating and developing as a part of this process. Okay?
And then, so would that be what leads into the dashboard that we talked about?
Could, could very well, things that we identify in terms of, and, and Gary's last comment, I think was really good for some of you that were a part of the goal setting with Laura Martinez. We set some kind of large overarching goals, and then during the conversation at each of the tables, there were some of these kinda key words, key ideas that came out of that that, you know, and because of the board admin, the admin, you know, administrators were part of that conversation. We took that information and then, you know, Laura got to work on the communications plan, you know, that was, she did the actual work and kinda set some of those actual pieces in place, but it came from, some of that stuff came from conversations that we had in those groups and then, and as a whole. Uh, but yeah, um, if I'm hearing Gary saying, and to answer your question, Alex, um, that stakeholder group comes up with some of those broad goals, some of that conversation filters down to the administrators who are part of the process, um, and then we take that and develop those action steps. And actually, one step that is kinda, I think, unique maybe to Sycamore, is that we have, you know, board admin, who was talking about that, and like the last question, well, meetings, we still got a couple of town or board admin retreats, um, that I think are kinda perfect for, and we've done this work as a stakeholder group, we've done this work as a district, you guys have helped set, finalize some of those goals. Part of our job is then to come back and say, here are some of the action steps that came out of, out of that work, um, not necessarily for approval, but certainly for, for some discussion, to make sure that you guys see, hey, the work that we did as a group aligns with what the administrative team is doing, and really not just the administrative team, but teachers as well throughout the district. Um, you know, we would, I think that's a great opportunity to present that information to the board, get a little feedback, tweak it if needed, um, and then use those to go forward.
Yeah, I think to, to Alex's point, I had the same question, is just trying to understand, what is that level of granularity that we're getting to? Cause I think the struggle, at least that I've had, and it sounds like some others have had, that we've got these values and, oh, the overarching goals have always been there, and if I looked at a hundred different school districts in Illinois or Kansas or wherever, and I'm looking at one right now, I can read it, I'm paraphrasing here, but provide the best programs, hire the best people, have the best facilities and make it a positive place. I bet every school has that same goal, but then how do you make improvements there? And maybe there's a squad there that says we wanna be mediocre, I'd nail it.
Haven't found that one yet.
But you know, if I dig in then to their strategic plan, like, uh, for best educational programs, you know, uh, sub-goal one is, uh, obtain state program approval for agricultural education, business education, industrial technology, like, okay, I see how that's an actionable item, here's a certification or program we wanna invest in, cause that's, that's for kids, and I feel like that's the step that's been missing, or just hasn't been articulated maybe at the board level, and everybody beneath us could be doing those things so well that it's just transparent to us, that there's no, no lack, but I think that's the step that I'm wondering, through this process, that's something that your organization is kinda helping us calm down, or it's, no, we're making sure everyone is in agreement on the general direction, but that's still an administrative function that the admin team's gonna come to the board at some point and say, these are those sub-goals that are measurable and achievable and?
I'm sorry, a politician here, and please don't put me in that category, but it's a little bit of both there, in other words, yes, we are looking for that over, those overarching goals, but we are also looking for, again, some aspects of particular interest and desire for, uh, for inclusion into or under that overarching goal. We're not asking that group to come up with the specifics on that goal, but for example, technology-wise, okay? Let's say that you're looking at, um, maybe it's told that we need to review our network aspect. Well, the people who are on that technology committee may or may not know all that's involved with that, but they know enough about the network to know that it's gotta be revamped to 21st century standards, okay? This is only meant to be, you know, an example. That's the case, then that's the piece then that goes to the administration and/or whomever the administration sees fit to get that information, see what exactly will that all entail, let's make that more of a goal. Regarding our role in that process, to whatever extent the administration would like us to be a part of that aspect, we, we say with you to get to a point of, um, I'll say more specificity, but when I say more specificity, that will vary from district to district. As far as how deep and then we'd say like us to get with you, at a certain point, what typically happens is I'll say, you know, Gary, we've got this now. We've got that general direction that we need, that we were looking for, how do these, you know, three to five points under technology look as far as what we'd like to implement over the course of the next three years? And then we, you know, we look at it and have that conversation, and then, once everyone is satisfied, we move on. Perhaps.
You know, I think that, um, our conversation at our last meeting, um, we all were of the opinion that, you know, we have, we have a good mission statement, and I, and I bet ninety percent, if not higher, of all people involved with our district can give you what the mission statement is.
Sure.
Um, we have a good vision statement, we have a good set of values, we've gone through three revisions of the strategic design, out of all those three, very little, if anything, has changed. The mission statement has stayed the same for all three, and that's over twenty years now.
Right, yeah.
Um, the, uh, the vision has stayed the same, and that, you know, the core values, uh, maybe the way we express them a little bit have changed, but they're in essence the same.
Sure.
And I think our, our frustration is that we have this really good base, but we don't take the next step. We don't, we don't do the goal-setting that, that, that sort of jumps from that base into implementing that strategic design.
Sure.
Throughout the district.
Sure.
And, and I think that's the piece where we're struggling and we really need help.
Sure.
I really, I mean, the other parts, and I, I mean, you know, I don't mean to speak for everybody, they can certainly tell you otherwise, but I, from our general discussion last time, it seemed to me that that was the conclusion that I drew, was that, uh, you know, we have this base, and now we've got a, you know, that's why, I think that's why you're getting these goal-setting questions, because that's where, we're, we're at a good place, but we wanna go better, and we wanna get those goals properly aligned with what we have already accomplished.
Right, sure. If I may, I wanna go a little bit out on a limb, uh, hopefully I'm not gonna swat off behind you and ask to say that. So I'm currently working with another district that is almost in the identical spot, in fact, you know, except, except for coming here and saying, I'm not sure for sure how you guys feel about your mission, your vision and your core values. He just came right out, this came from the superintendent, and he said he had the board's approval to have this conversation with me. Said, Gary, we don't wanna touch our mission, our vision and our core values, we're, we're good with that, and I've got that from the board. He said, what we need is exactly what you pointed out, Jim, and that is, we need to, um, solidify some goals that will truly drive our district to those next places that we'd like to see us go. What does that process look like? And I'll be honest, that's the first district we're doing it, actually, I started that work in the fall, you know, with that district, Eureka District, you know, where they are downstate near Peoria, actually. But, uh, your situation sounds semi-familiar, and I need to hear, you know, more specifically or lately, that, you know, you don't wish to do the other work. When we still do the survey, that's exactly what we're gonna do in that district, is we're gonna start out with a survey, get feedback from the community as it relates to, you know, those five areas, um, somewhat, and even more, cause we'll customize that survey, ask the questions that you want answered to, okay? So we'll give you a template of questions that districts typically will ask, but we can modify and customize that, okay? Get that data, and then, rather than go to a whole group of fifty or sixty, we just identify five different groups to work with, academics group, the facilities group, the finance group and so on, and I don't mean to call it jump-starting it, but kinda bypassing so that initial groundwork that many districts fortunately or unfortunately have to do because they don't have those things in place to the extent that they would like, and just move forward from there. The other piece that we are going to do in that other district though, is that we are going to reinforce with those who work on these, what I'll call subcommittee groups, is make sure that everyone is fully aware of and understanding of what the purpose is of the mission and the vision and the core values. Make sure that they've got the right foundation to be able to then have the conversations that are necessary about the other areas.
Yeah, that makes good sense to me, and, and I really think that's the place where we're at. I'd, um, I'd certainly invite my colleagues to come in.
Mr. President, that's up to you.
If I, I'm just gonna jump in for a second. I, that was my takeaway from the last conversation, it's good to hear, you know, what you're gonna be doing with Eureka, and some of your folks down there, being sure you can kind of, you know, compare notes. But that, I think, to go back to Eric's question, kind of Alex's too, if we can jumpstart and get to some of those steps maybe a little quicker, um, I would appreciate Gary's involvement and helping, you know, working with the leadership team, setting some of those action steps, and then bringing those back to you, cause that's not step nine, you know, that's bringing those action steps, uh, back to the board is step eight, nine, something like that. So ultimately, although that's work that maybe the, the leadership team does with Gary, ultimately that's still coming back to the board. So I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, I'm pretty intrigued that, that's what you're doing with, with your?
Yeah, like I said, and this just come about within the last two months, is what we've been having these conversations, and, you know, again, it's, it's different for us, but again, knowing what the purpose of these other aspects of it are, um, you know, I'm working with a district that's very comfortable with those aspects.
Well, I mean, quite frankly, the, the process you described for, you know, setting the vision and the mission statement and, you know, uh, those are all, um, exactly what we did.
Sure.
Uh, three times. And, and, you know, it, it does, it takes a lot of time.
It does.
And, you know, after a while, after a while, you start to lose some people because they're like, dude, we already did this, you know, what's the, what's the fruits of that labor, and, and I don't know that we could really?
Reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, so we can really show them.
Especially if the wheel's looking pretty round already.
Right, exactly.
So, and really, very little, if any, change, but a lot of time and effort put into it with very, very little or, and mostly grammatical changes as opposed to consensual changes.
Well, oftentimes, you know, every district is different, you know, with regard to the culture in your district and how much you've embraced what you have. And when Steve shared with me what your document looked like, I looked at this and I said, there's some good stuff in here. There's a lot of stuff in there that, um, you know, I hope I'm not being too candid, is kinda like, wow, who's gonna use this, these pieces of that, okay? But at the same time, you know, as a- Okay, but at the same time, you know, as a former superintendent, like, I'd like to say a practitioner who's interested in moving the district and community forward, how do we make it usable, user-friendly even to an extent, to be able to catapult the district forward? So I'm open to that conversation. Again, you know, I'm more than glad to say for as much or as little more of the conversation as you'd like to have about this. But I would say just, you know, share your thoughts with, as you normally would, with Mr. Wilder, and you can get back to me, and, you know, we'll develop a plan that will work for Sycamore based on where you are, if that's something that you're interested in, working on together.
Just a quick question. Thank you for this presentation, I appreciate you taking the time. Just, all right, so with the Eureka School District, it sounds like, and again, like what I'm thinking of, and I know that school districts use a different language, but I'm thinking of key performance indicators. And like, we just need to create key performance indicators. I think I've seen school districts use success, success indicators, I think is the hollow version of it, but are you able to, is your firm able to help us create those key performance indicators?
Absolutely.
And then make budgeting possible?
And then develop the metrics to measure those key performance indicators.
Okay.
We can build out, that's not typically part of this initial process, okay? But we're kind of going into a hybrid of two different phases of work that, that our company does. And, you know, the other one, we call it living the strategic plan. And without calling it that, that's kind of where we're heading down, is you don't need the strategic planning process, you need more of a creating and living the strategic plan piece. And that's, you know, to your point, the KPIs and that kind of thing. You know, terminology varies from district to district as far as what exactly, but the point is, what are those key elements that you're looking to create and measure? And then what are the metrics that are related to that?
Yeah, well, I, and myself personally, I'd love to know, and I'm, I'm saying even KPIs for, for us as a board, like, I'd love to know that I'm not doing well, and I could be doing this better, or that as a board, we need to improve this, and if we add a success indicator to go as a board collectively, we really missed the mark here. By no means am I saying that we need to create a box for our administrators, as much as we also need to create that same sort of box for ourselves.
Well, that's something, again, not to sell ourselves short, but that's what the School Board Association actually works with you on. You do self-evaluations as a board. I'm not sure how specific they typically get with those aspects, but, you know, we're looking at, you know, overall, moving the district forward, you know, first and foremost. As a board, you know, yes, we can customize things, and that might be a different conversation.
Okay.
I've worked with a School Board Association. I'm glad, I'm glad Gary brought that up, because that's one of the trainings that they offer for self-evaluation. And, and it's mostly focused on the governance responsibilities that the board has. But they send a survey out in advance, each of you would have access to do that survey digitally. They collect that information, and then they come onsite, special board meeting, just working with the board. In fact, that can be included session, if I remember correctly. So you can have really candid conversations about, and, you know, don't get me wrong, it's, they don't come in and it's all doomsday, and you gotta turn everything upside down. The boards typically are doing, you know, some things really well, some things need attention, and, you know, my, my experience personally is there's maybe one or two things that really jump out, and hey, here's where we can really focus our, our efforts. It's pretty focused on the board's governance responsibilities, but part of that is monitoring, you know, the district's progress, so we're kind of tied to, tied to this work. So that, that might be something the board wants to consider, I think, after this work? This is going to be somewhat intense, maybe doing that.
Right, I'm just all kidding for just top-down accountability. I'm not saying that it just needs to be.
I think for this process, though, what we have to do is define our role and make sure that we're not getting onto the dance floor.
It's a way, exactly, right.
And I think, I think, you know, the depth of the questions that we're asking kind of indicates to me that we're heading that way, and, and that, that is probably not where we want to be. I, I think, you know, I think we, we should have discussions about the goals and things like that, but I don't, I think that's the purview of the administration to actually carry those, to set them, set them in place with discussion and input from the groups that are assembled, and then we hold them to that.
Well said, Mr. President. In fact, I do want to make sure that we understand, you know, throughout my presentation today, I've tried to say that the goals end up going back to the administration and work with the staff and so on, to develop things to bring back to the board. And again, that's under the, the guise of belief, you know, as a board, you're the governing, gur, excuse me, governance of the district, where, you know, what they present to you is for you to, you know, approve or not approve, and/or to have conversation about it and/or go back. It's not to have you, with all due respect, actually develop those things. That's, that's why you've got the quality teams that you have in place to create those things for you.
Agreed. I just wanted to have the conversation, because for me, that is my key performance indicator or my, you know, notice of completion, and if somebody were, you know, to, to ask me for referrals to your organization, like, that's the document I'd want to be able to say, yeah, we got out of it exactly what I was hoping. I now know what our district is trying to do over the next one, two, and three years, and how we're going to, but that for me is just the end product, how we get there, I agree.
Absolutely. And that monitoring, you know, as Mr. Wilder said, is exactly what your role is. It gives you some key points to take a look at to make sure you're not progressing the way you'd like to, and/or if you're not, why not. Any other questions? Great conversation, I do appreciate that. Please, question?
Now, you mentioned in slide 18, you kind of spoke on this a little bit, you continue to support the plan's implementation, and if it's already been completed. In what ways do you do that? Do you just work with the administration? Do you work with the schools themselves? How in-depth is that?
Great question. Typically, we work with the administration, we work through, typically through the superintendent to see how can we support the work that you're doing to make sure that it's being moved along. And it's not uncommon for us to be invited to cabinet level and/or the entire administrative team, however that breakup looks like, in order for us to then inquire as to how are the things moving along, and what can they be doing differently? Where are they getting hung up on anything? If it's not moving along as well as it should? You know, I had mentioned the sample of McHenry's district. We went back to them for about three months afterwards, until they felt that, you know, we've got this, we're just going to take it from here, kind of thing. So we make ourselves available, pretty much to the will of the administration, to ensure that they're comfortable being able to move it forward. So, good luck.
Any questions for Gary?
I think we've been as candid as we could be, and as, and as open with you as we could be.
Sure.
Appreciate the same coming from you, so that's, I think this has been a fruitful discussion.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your candidness, because that does help me a lot as far as, you know, what I may have come in with versus what I'm leaving with, and that's perfectly fine. I want to be able to meet your district's needs in the best way that we can. And if we weren't the people to do that, I would say, you know, what, conversation changed, it's not us. But if the conversation changed, it's still us. You know, if I can be so bold as to say that, I think we can work well together under what I call modified planning.
I think it gives, it gives me, it's great comfort that you're working with Eureka, and they're kind of in the same boat that we're in, so.
Sure.
This may be a home of mine for, for your group.
It may very well be, and I'll be thinking about that. So I appreciate the conversation. Thank you all for your questions.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Wilder.
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate, appreciate it, thanks.
Yep.
Okay. The next item under superintendent support is opening day for the 23-24 school year. So have a little fun with this. Nobody's happier, the kids are going back to school than parents are. Pretty excited about that. We've got, got a couple of our, our teachers in the back. I don't know if Linalee were in the patch, or Angie would be where in the patch, or whatever, but we're excited to welcome staff back on Monday. What we hope for is that they don't leave like the bottom picture. We don't want them exhausted after Monday. But we all know that those first days of planning and getting ready are, are pretty intense, so. A lot, a lot is coming up here in just the next couple of days. So just want to share some information about opening day for the board, for the attendees here. Opening day institute for the district is on Monday. We'll be pretty busy on Monday morning, we'll offer breakfast, welcome the staff back, recognize some of the staff, then we'll jump into the coming school year. In specific, I'll talk a little bit about the theme for the year, and how to connect that to what we've done in the past, so we're, so we have some consistency, but I don't want to spoil the surprise yet. Mike Rice will also talk about the progress and the next steps in terms of learner-centered education. So he and I will kind of tag team the bulk of the morning. Also do some training on parents' care, which is our new messaging system. I think that's up there. And some comments about the Spartan Two pantry, and how we can all support that. We'll break for lunch. District is not providing lunch, typically hasn't provided lunch. Everybody kind of goes on their own some of the buildings, maybe providing some of that. And in the afternoon, the bulk of the staff, not necessarily everybody, but the bulk of the staff will have professional, or time in their professional learning communities. We've got some stresses on spaces that are big enough to hold all of the staff, so not everybody will do that Monday afternoon, but the bulk of the staff will do that Monday afternoon. Teacher work day is on Tuesday, so that's a day that teachers have to get into their classrooms, meet with colleagues. We don't plan anything for that, that day. It's really time for teachers to, to be working in their buildings. The building meetings will take place on Monday, so staff doesn't come together at the high school in Octorian. They go to their home building. We have some staff that travel in between buildings, itinerant staff, but they all go to their home building, and then principals will have acquis for them on, on that day, and then they have some time that afternoon. Thursday is the first day of student attendance. It is not a late start day, because it's the very first day of school. We just wanted everybody to get in that, that regular parent routine. First late start will be the following Thursday on, I believe, the 24th. I think that's the highlights for the next week or so. Any questions about that for me? Board members are welcome to attend that time on, on Monday morning. Welcome to come in and chit chat with staff, and kind of socialize. You're welcome to have breakfast, Arbor Management. Who's done breakfast for us before is going to do breakfast again. So you're welcome to come in and get something to eat. And in the round, you're welcome to stay as long as you want for the morning, but, but typically, once the morning breaks, everybody starts to go in different directions, and if you stay that long, you're welcome to head back to your normal routine.
This is going to be the music lobby line.
It's all Rice.
We all want to know.
It's always a surprise.
Time going to be on strings.
Can't, can't give away. It's worth being there, it's always there.
Yeah. We do have some stuff, uh, stuff, fun stuff planned for, for Monday, but, yeah, we don't want to give away too much. Any other questions for me about opening day? Or really opening week?
No, how did it get here? It came so fast.
I do want to take a second to highlight the back-to-school bash. I had a chance to get down there before, and get ready to come here for board meeting. Sounds like some of you had the chance to do that, and some of our staff sort of came in down there. And third annual, this is an event that's really started to just continue to grow, and you just have a chance to walk around and see students, see families, see staff reconnect. What'd you do this summer? Are you relaxed, are you ready? Some say yes, some say no. But it's, that, that event has just become, you know, part of the fabric, I think, for our school district and our community, partnership with the city. To get that done and make that happen, it was great with a lot of volunteers that came together. Jen Eiffel and really Lauren Holtz are the masterminds of that event. Lauren really has been the mastermind for the last three years. Really started his partnership with SEF and the city. SEF is, has kind of dropped back for reasons that made sense, but, so now it's, it's really a district event and a new partner with the city. And, you know, Jimmy mentioned how to get here. I'm not sure how I got here either, but, but that event, having everybody there, and I think we had almost 40, about 40 different vendors or groups that showed up that just had a table, and had a chance to talk to people. Just amazing, so it's, that's a great way to really start the year up for the school year, and then next year, or next week, you'll start.
There was a line around the block to sit in the fire truck.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, and I, about 15 minutes in, I said, you don't want to bother this, I gotta get out. No, really.
You didn't cut?
Well, they went through some lengths to put the kids in. No, this was amazing, so really kudos to you guys on that bridge, the community too. And I think that really nice thing too is it really capitalizes on getting parents there with their students. So now they're bringing them in, they're invested, they're, now it's this collaboration. So like, Gary had mentioned about how, you know, they're really kind of rethinking that, like, you know, instead of just child goals, but our parent-child, so maybe there's a partnership here. What about a way that can be, you know?
Yeah, and, and you know, I think that's really important. It's not, you know, activities that aren't just kid over charts, and space painting and games. You know, there are, there are organizations that are there that have really valuable information for parents. So the fact that we really engage, you know, families, the whole family, I think, says a lot.
Better opportunity.
Yeah.
All right, next item then, open discussion, future agenda items.
Jim, one thing I wanted to mention, just along the same lines as Steve, is Thursday, the 10th, we welcome about 25-ish new educators, so that's new educator day, so we're getting started even sooner than what the slideshow. And we'll have them throughout the day. We'll kind of have them as an overall program for most of the day, and then a couple hours in their buildings at the end of the day. Changing it up a little bit this year, taking them on a facilities tour and community tour. So we've never got them out to the other buildings that they don't work in, and haven't taken them around to show them kind of landmark spots in, in Sycamore, so really making a district and community thing too on those things. And I think I usually report back to you guys after that day, but wanted to give you heads up, that's coming up, and if it's worth reporting back to, you know, next couple meetings, we always do that, so we'll let you know. But you're always invited for lunch as well, so I know you guys have gotten that. If you can make it, great, not interesting.
You guys are going to do the person bridge?
Uh, yeah.
On positive energy for them.
Again, some surprises for the start, the start of, of the day. I'm guessing our new educators probably are going to watch these board meetings before that, so. The, the plan is to have some of our current teachers are planning to come on and welcome them. Again, something, a new twist, but to be there in the morning to greet them on their first day, kind of walk in and enter the district, so I know some of our current educators will be there to do so.
You'll know who's like really plugged in if I just spoil it for somebody.
Yeah.
Like, they're watching the board meetings.
It'll be, it'll be great no matter what, so.
I think there was some great new additions, so looking forward to hearing how those go.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's really, boy, I mean, that's welcoming.
Strong culture.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah, perfect. Well done.
I just have a question. It might have been answered, I may be almost don't remember. Is there a certain threshold when the board has to approve new contracts? Not, not staff and contracts, but with vendors, purchasing equipment, that aren't subject to, that are exempt from the bidding?
If they're exempt from bidding, not necessarily.
Okay.
No, so I think your question's specifically to tech, to technology.
Well, that was the one I emailed.
Yeah, but.
Just in general.
Yeah, so buses would be another example. And, and some of those aren't, don't fall under their exemptions for the bidding requirements. The board wouldn't necessarily approve those. Anything that falls into the bidding requirement, which was 25,000, but it's, it's been increased to 35,000, sort of changes in laws last, uh, legislative session. That's typically what's been done. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Is that just standard procedure? Okay.
I expect it's the law.
I know if it's the law, but if there's, I mean, I think I've seen other districts that do have, if it's over 100,000 or 200,000 dollars, they'll. that do have, if it's over a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars, it'll still come.
I, I know some districts that have adopted policies or practices like that, typically for things like technology, things that need to be provided, you know, in schools, it gives tech department flexibility, it gives them sort, and that, again, that's just an example.
I mean, we usually do that, I mean, we make our decisions there during the budgeting process, so.
Okay. It is...
I mean, so, I mean, it's part of the budgeting process, yeah. They're going to buy three new buses or something like that, they can prove that. So we would expect the administration to get their best prep.
And, and part of the budgeting process, that's changed a little bit over the years, but part of the budgeting process is having an early meeting with the finance committee, and I think that's you and Eric. So that's part of when those conversations happen, and here's what we've budgeted for, transportation, technology, whatever the case may be, and there's some discussion there at those meetings, and then that's shared with the rest of the board too, so that's something that you'll have a little more involvement with.
Okay, well, if, if there's just some time, you know, either during the budgeting process, that someone on the board is aware of purchase, that's, that's all I, that's the interesting question.
Yeah.
Other items of open discussion, future agenda items?
When I was at the back-to-school bash, safe passage was there, they did mention an interest in potential coming to speak to some of the schools. That might be something to discuss later on the road, when they judge it. I don't know if they've done that in the past, if anybody else is familiar with safe passage, what they do in community, but that could be something maybe to discuss as future agenda.
She came, gave a presentation last year, too. Somebody did.
Yeah. Talked about some of the curriculum that they, that they can provide. We've not necessarily partnered with them on that curriculum, but we, I miss them as schools, had representatives from safe passage, passage, and the topics in their classes. Some of the topics can be a little touchy, so that, you know, they work with safe passage to make sure it's appropriate, but we've done a little bit in the past, but if they'd like to, you know, retake to me or whatever, we'll be glad to talk to them more about that.
That would be the best, that would be the best, I'd get you, who would talk to you.
I was wondering how the best was to take that, so I'll make sure that they, they get your information.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, thank you.
Other issues? Open discussions, future agenda items?
Only once, only twice.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, purchase or release of real estate in imminent litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call?
Capel?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Greos?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Chala?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.